All right, the time is 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for June 3rd, 2025 is now in session. First on the agenda is Councilmember Westbrook will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve this community. We ask for your guidance as we gather to make decisions that affect the lives of our neighbors, families, and future generations. Grant us wisdom to discern what is right, courage to pursue what is just, and humility to listen with open minds and compassionate hearts. May our discussions be thoughtful, our actions fair, and our intentions, intentions rooted in service. Bless our city with peace, unity, and prosperity. Watch over our first responders, public servants, and all those who work each day to keep our community safe and strong. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Westbrook. All right, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one is ASE Automotive Professionals Month, June 2025. Excuse me, June 2025. Councilmember Watson will be reading the proclamation. If I can have the automotive crew, please join me up here.
I don't bite. Automotive Service Professionals Month, June 2025. Whereas the city of Shirts is committed to delivering outstanding service to enhance the quality of life within the community and to recognize those committed to that mission. And whereas the National Institute of Automotive Service Excellence, ASE, is a nonprofit organization established in 1972 and the mission includes improving the quality of the vehicle's repair and service by testing and clarifying automotive professionals. And whereas ASE is designated the month of June as National Automotive Service Professionals Month to recognize those in the industry who are proficient and credentialed and committed to excellence. And annually, within the month, June 12th, is recognized as National Automotive Service Professionals Day, with June 11th through the 17th named National Automotive Service Professional Week. And whereas the city of Shirts has seven employees with over 75 total years of experience in the fleet management and mechanical service. And whereas the fleet department service, all the city vehicles with preventative maintenance to complex repairs, which could include tire change and rebuilding and replacing entire AC systems and everything mechanical are required to work on to keep the city moving. Whereas 2024, the fleet department had 2,502 work orders and are dedicated to keeping vehicles on the road safely every day with a mission of providing efficient, cost-effective, and customer-driven fleet management services. Now therefore Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor of Shirts, do hereby proclaim the month, June 2025, as National Automotive Service Professionals Month.
I just want to say that I am really grateful to have such an amazing fleet team. As the proclamation stated, they all have collectively probably over 75, if not more, years of service and they truly enjoy what they do. And so they, they, they manage about 450 of our assets and they keep them, you know, in order and, and operating so that our colleagues can do, you know, their jobs to the best of their ability. And so really truly grateful for the gentleman and Crystal who's standing up here. So thank you.
Our next proclamation is the United States Army 250th Birthday Proclamation, June 14th, 2025. If I can have those members that served in the army, please storm me up here. Sheldon, Mr. Jameson, come on up here. Anybody else who's served in the army, please storm me up here. Gentlemen, thank you for your service and Councilmember Guerrero will be reading the proclamation.
Recognizing the 250th anniversary of the United States Army, June 14th, 2025. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Continental Congress established the Continental Army, marking the birth of the United States Army, which has since grown into one of the most respected and powerful military institutions in the world. Whereas 250 years of the United States Army has defended our nation with honor, courage, and unwavering commitment, preserving the freedoms and values upon which our country was founded. Whereas generations of soldiers, past and present, have answered the call to serve, sacrificing time with family, personal safety, and in many cases, their very lives to protect our nation and support peace and stability around the world. Whereas the army's legacy includes not only military victories, but also contributions to science, technology, medicine, infrastructure, and leadership, shaping both American society and global community. Whereas we recognize the invaluable role of the army families, veterans, and civilian personnel who support and sustain the mission of the army every day. Whereas the city of Shirts proudly honors the enduring legacy of continued service of the United States Army as it celebrates 250th anniversary and reaffirms our community's respect and gratitude for all who served. Now therefore, Mayor of Shirts proclaims June 14th, 2025, as United States Army 250th Anniversary Day in Shirts and call upon all citizens to recognize and celebrate the history, dedication, and sacrifice of the men and women of the United States Army. Sign, Mayor of Shirts.
You know, as Councilmember Guerrero said, 250 years ago, it all started on April 19th, 1775. And that's when they had the first shot that was heard around the world. And the army was our first service. And look where we're at now, the most powerful nation in the world. And it started with the US Army. Thanks again, gentlemen, for joining us here today. All right, we have employee introductions. First, we have Parks.
Hello, everyone. Today I have the privilege of introducing our new administrator to the Parks Office, who will be working out of the Civic Center as well as the Parks Office. This is Samantha Pinello. She is from Las Vegas, Nevada, and spent the last 20 years in the hospitality industry. She moved to San Antonio three years ago and is excited to transition into a new career here in local government and eager to learn the ins and outs of how the city operates. Thank you so much. I am really excited to be here. Like I said, or like she said, it is a big transition for me, but Parks and Recreation Department was a good place for me to start. It's been a lot of fun, but all of the departments here that I've had to work with so far have been really helpful as well. So it's been very welcoming.
Welcome to our team.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Police Department.
Good evening. Today I'm here introducing Destiny Hathaway. She started with the city on May 5th as our newest communications officer with the Police Department. She is a local, growing up in Universal City in a loving home, graduating from Samuel Clemens High School. Go Buffs. After high school, she attended cosmetology.
The city of.
After high school, she attended cosmetology school and is certified in aesthetics. When she started her new career with us, her husband also switched fields and is working as an EMT pursuing his paramedic license. They have a son, Lincoln, who is 12 years old and just graduated from sixth grade. He keeps him busy with baseball and soccer. She also has chickens and loves cats and dogs. She loves to bake, enjoys gardening, getting her nails done, massages, decorating for the holidays, and her favorite colors are pink and green. Her most recent hobby is making sourdough and her guilty pleasure is listening, listening to TruKind podcasts and documentaries.
I just want to say I'm so grateful to be here, just given this opportunity to be one, a part of this wonderful community. And I really can't wait to start making changes and pursuing this career that I've started. So thank you so much.
Welcome to our team. And we have two presentations today. Our first one is Siblo Valley Local Government Corporation, Justin Murray, and our city manager, Steve Williams, will be doing the presentation.
So thank you, Mayor, Council. We are here to honor Justin Murray and. It is so fantastic that they wrapped it up so tight. So we are here to honor Justin's service and he dedicatedly served the Siblo Valley Local Government Corporation affectionately known as the CVLGC. Not only did he serve for 14 years on the CVLGC. Not only did he serve on the CVLGC board for 14 years, but most of that time he spent it as the board president, providing leadership. So, and not only is Justin a longtime Shirts resident, he also has extensive professional experience in project, as a project manager, working in water-related roles. So he offered a lot of valuable insight into the board during his time on there. This allowed him a considerable amount of, of, of insight in the early development stages in particular of, of the board itself. And comments from the general manager of the CVLGC, Alan Cockrell, who is here as well, and is one of our army veterans. He said that Justin always came to the board meetings with a positive attitude and concern for CVLGC success. His dedication for the proper operation of the CVL, of the CVLGC was his priority and his professional guidance was beneficial and appreciated. Cockrell attributes the success of the CVLGC in acquiring water rights and developing a strategic plan for the future was in part due to the leadership provided by Justin. So Justin, we just want to say thank you very much and in grateful recognition of your outstanding service with the Siblo Valley Local Government Corporation from July 2011 to March 2025, thank you very much. I will note, he did grow up in Live Oak and his parents are here and son and his father was a council member in Live Oak as well.
Well, Mr. Murray, thank you for your dedication, your service to the city of Shirts. Appreciate it very much. Our next presentation is a 20-year, 10-year milestone service pin presentation to Shirts Fire Marshal Benjamin Boney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something we like to do and as you know, we do 10-year awards here at the city. We do them for one year, five year, 10 year, 15 year. And then if you reach the 20-year milestone, as Ben has, we bring you up in front of council and I get to roast you a little bit. No, we get to acknowledge you in front of the council and the public and in our council meeting. But first, before we do that, I'd like to have a little bit of fun. 20 years is a long time. So I'd like to play a little game called What Happened in January of 2005? So back then YouTube was created, the price of a gallon of gas was a dollar eighty-six. Mario's Let Me Love You was the number one Billboard Hot 100. Is that, is that your song back then? No, okay. And the national debt was only nine, 7.9 trillion. But more importantly, the city of Shirts hired Ben Boney. So Ben Boney. There's only one slide. You can see some slides there of overtime. Ben Boney currently serves as the fire marshal since July of 2021. He was hired in January of 2005, served as a firefighter and a driver while he was in the suppression side of the department. He then moved into the administrative side and served as fire inspector, deputy fire marshal, and fire marshal. And overall, the fire marshal's responsibilities are to ensure that the community slash citizen safety by, by ensuring new construction in existing buildings meet codes, standards, providing, providing fire prevention, education programs, and investigating fires. Ben was born in Grand Forks, North Dakota, but he moved to Texas shortly thereafter because his father was in the air force and was stationed at Randolph Air Force Base. He attended school at Randolph Air Force Base until eighth grade and then moved to SCUC and attended Samuel Clemens. Go Buffs, you're supposed to say go Buffs. This is the part where you say go Buffs. And then he, while he was at Clemens, he played baseball and basketball and then attended San Antonio College where he earned his certifications for firefighting and EMS technician basic. He's been married to Melissa for will be 20 years this December, and they have four crazy and rambunctious boys, Dayton, Jackson, Liam, and Griffin. Life is always busy with work or events for the family since they are involved in many sports teams, band, choir, and JROTC. He likes to travel with his family mainly via road trips with no real itinerary, just driving to see where they end up after picking a final destination. He loves watching his kids grow and seeing them participate in sports, band, and other activities. Congratulations on 20 years, sir. Run off. Would you like to say anything, sir? Well, you're first. Oh, one more picture. Sorry. Would you like to say something, sir?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve in the current role that I'm in. It's fun and exciting. It's challenging and can't wait to see what the next 10 or more years hold for me and the department as a whole. So thank you.
I'll add just one, a little bitty something. Ben's commitment is when you accomplish 20 years, it's a great deal. But to see how he's grown in the last six since I've gotten to work with him is very significant as well. I look forward to the next 20 years. I won't be here, but it'll be, it'll go well. Also, part of that commitment though is family and all of you all growing up with him and growing up with us. So we appreciate you as well. And seriously, we appreciate all you do and what he means to the community is a great deal. Thanks, Ben.
All right, we'll move on to city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming events.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let folks know, this Friday, June 6th, Parks is hosting Movies and Music in the Park. That's an Ashley Park, starts at 8:00 PM, 5:34 Ashley Park Circle, featured movie is Shrek. But also the Shirts Historic Preservation Committee is going to be there doing trivia night, trivia event beforehand. Next day, Saturday, June 7th, the Shirts Hometown Harvest Farmers Market, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Pickrell Park, 703 Oak Street. Friday, June 13th, the Junior and High School Fire Academy Graduation and Lunch, 12:30 PM, Civic Center Grand Ballroom here. Friday, June 13th, more movies, yeah, Movies and Music in the Park. That's at Rhine Valley Park, 9958 Mulhouse Drive. The featured movie there is Inside Out 2. June 1st through 29th, the library is having a survey. The library wants to hear your voice. So the library is conducting a survey to gather feedback on library services, collections, and programs. The survey can be accessed online at shirtslibrary.org or you can stop by the library and pick up a survey there. The feedback will help them grow and improve services programs and resources they provide to the community. And then our next council meeting is back here on June 17th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. James. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. We had a few promotions this month or this past month. Mike Reed was promoted from EMS training instructor to battalion chief. And we also had Jesse Lee step into the role of code enforcement officer, from code enforcement officer to building inspector. Logan Allen moved up from fleet mechanic one to fleet mechanic two. And lastly, we had Greg Flowers, who is promoting from police officer to sergeant. So really proud of all those folks who moved up. And one thing I really love is to see our folks promote and move up in our organization. Thank you.
All right, announcements and recognitions by the mayor I have done. So next on the agenda is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. Now we have three public hearings scheduled today. You do have a choice. You may speak during the. You may speak during the hearing of residents, or you may choose to speak during the public hearing, or you may speak at both. The choice is yours. With that, Mayor Protemp, please carve first speaker.
First speaker is Mr. Daniel Jamerson.
My name is Daniel Jamerson, representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars. FM 1,000, address is 1,000 FM 78. Kane misses. We've got an M68, one tank with a Holliser out front. And as it's already been said, June 14th is Army Day. You'll see the American flags flying on Main Street. So, when you see those flags, remember, it's the Army's birthday plus it's Flag Day to honor the red, white, and blue. Some of y'all have served in the military, so you know what I mean, and my salute is to y'all for that. Also, coming up on the third Saturday of the month is our breakfast. And if you have not come out to get a breakfast, come on, you're missing it. We've already got a request for some grits. I can enjoy a bowl of grits. So, please, come out, eggs to order, all you can eat, 10 bucks. Community is invited, city council is invited, our first responders, they come out. We've had our police department, we've had our fire department, and we've had our EMS come out and get a good breakfast while they're on shift. So, please, come out, help support the Veterans of Foreign Wars. So, you are why we're here, and I thank you.
Next is Mr. Don Nolan.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Don Nolan. I live in the Rhine Valley community off of 1518 and Lower Seguin Road. My question tonight is, it's just a couple of questions, and that is, I know I don't have to tell you guys about the growth in that area, 1518, almost all the way out to I-10 and even on the other side. Seems like a lot of your meetings are taken up by rezoning requests, people coming wanting to rezone agricultural to single-family development. My question is, is how the city is taking, how the city is reacting to this massive growth out in that area? And especially, when 1518 gets built or widened the way they anticipate, you and I both know that there's going to be commercial businesses stacking up all along there, clear to I-10 probably and even on the other side. So, I guess, from a city standpoint, how are we preparing ourselves for that growth? And probably specifically, one thing that a lot of people are interested in is the fire and police protection. Now, we do have Substation Number 3 out there off of Lower Seguin and 1518, which is very welcomed. I don't know if police stations do substations in areas or not, but we would want to make sure that we have the, you know, sufficient response times to any type of crime or whatever that might occur out there. So, that's really where I'm asking, is how are we preparing ourselves for that massive growth along there and along 1518 with the commercials as it gets built up?
Next is Mr. Dana Eldridge.
My name is Dana Eldridge, 2628 Gallin Fox Drive, Shirts, Texas, 78108. I got this thing in the mail, and it fell open to the middle section. So, it brought me back to one of the things I talked about three or four weeks ago, the selection for Frontier as the Waste Management for the City of Shirts. So, I decided to look it up under Better Business Bureau. They're in Better Business Bureau, but they're not accredited, which means they don't have a rating. They haven't met the standard, basic standards to be, to get rated. On Yelp, they have a 1.4 approval rating. On Glass Door, they have a 2.5 rating by the employees of the company. Just a couple of things there. The QR code, everything in there seems to be color-coded except for your day of pickup, and then you got to read the fine print to get to, oh, there's my pickup date. I was a little concerned about that because everything else was color-coded. In here, it talks about hazardous waste. You have to make an appointment to have it picked up. So, every month, we're charging about $20,000 to the citizens of Shirts for the 20,000 houses, charging about $20,000 to see if anybody's going to call to have hazardous waste picked up. If one person does in that month, somebody's made $20,000. Over a year, that's about $250,000. Whoever vetted this company didn't do complete homework. They're not rated real well. Several people have shown me some TikTok things. Unfortunately, I can't look at all of them, of them driving by trashcans, opening them up, and then driving on. So, the vetting was not done properly. So, my, part of my last thing is, if we were not, if we knew we were going to charge people more for trash pickup, which we're very grateful that for seven years, we didn't have an increase, I want you to know, I was grateful for that. But if we're going to have an increase, and the cost of things go up, I understand that. Just like going to a restaurant now, the prices have gone up on the food, plates seem to be smaller, servings seem to be smaller, getting less for what you're getting. We up the price, and we're getting less service. Somebody didn't do their homework. Somebody didn't really check on this before it was approved. I'm leaving.
Mayor, that's all.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to considered agenda items are considered self-explanatory. Information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, appointments, reappointments, and resignations of the City of Shirts boards, commissions, and committees. Item number three, resolution number 25R062. Item number four, resolution number 25R066. Item number five, resolution number 25R064. Item number six, resolution number 25R065. And item number seven, resolution number 25R063. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action?
Number two, please.
Number two. Any others, council? Is there a motion to approve items one and three through seven?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Watson, second by Mayor Protemp Hayward. Council, any other comments? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right, item number two was removed. That's the appointments, reappointments, and resignations of the city boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Hayward.
One of the reasons I pulled it was, it's not Brian Snow, it's Brad Snow. And then, the other reason I pulled it is just to say thank you to Mr. Dana Eldridge and Mr. Johnny McDowell for a long-term service in the city. Mr. Eldridge, with the Shirts Housing Authority, I think, was 14 years, and I just wanted to say thank you for your service and wondering if we can do something for that. And then, for Parks and Recs, Mr. Johnny McDowell, we know that he's done a lot in the city. He has a complex named after him, but just to say thank you for his service as long as he did for the city. I think they, you know, with them doing the service that they did for the number of years that they did, I think it made the city go in the right direction for each organization, and I just wanted to commend them for that and then change the name from Brian to Brad. Make a motion that we pass it.
Do I have a second? A second. Have motion made by Mayor Protemp Hayward with a correction on the spelling and second by Councilmember Guerrero. Council, any other comments? Please cast your vote. Okay. Oh, we... Councilmember Guerrero, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Dana Eldridge for his service and also thank him because he's the one that, he's the reason I'm sitting up here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Council, if you can please, excuse me, please publish the vote. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right, we will move on to our first public hearing. Item number eight, ordinance number 25S022, conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 20 acres of land from pre-development district to agricultural district and single-family residential agricultural district to single-family residential R2 located 4,800 mile, 4,800 feet east of Interstate FM 15 and Lower Seguin Road, known as 12816 Lower Seguin Road and 12746 Lower Seguin Road, and more specifically known as Bear County property identification numbers 310027, 310026, and 310028, City of Shirts, Bear County, Texas. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Williams. Ordinance 25S22, a proposed zone change to R2 along Lower Seguin, approximately 20 acres. Daisy Marquez, planner. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. It is to the east of the intersection of FM 1518 and Lower Seguin Road. It is currently zoned pre-development district, single-family residential slash agricultural district RA and agricultural district AD, and it currently contains some rural residences. To the north is Lower Seguin Road, which is our right-of-way, and then farther up north, we have Saddle Brook Ranch PDD. To the south, we have agricultural district. It is some sort of agricultural operation and a rural residence. And then, to the east, we have pre-development district, single-family residential agricultural district, and some R2, and some of this is still undeveloped in agriculture. And then, to the west, we have the Carmel Ranch PDD that is currently being developed as single-family residential. So, we sent out 40 public notices on April 21st. We did receive two in favor. We posted it in the paper and a notice sign was placed along Lower Seguin, and it did go to P&amp;Z for a public hearing on May 7th. So, again, the subject property is approximately 20 acres. They're proposing a single-family residential development, and they are proposing R2 zoning. So, you can see the difference here. Agricultural district more meant for some sort of ag operation, half an acre, RA as well, and they're proposing R2, which is 70 by 120 lots at 8,400 square feet. So, when making zone changes, staff looks towards UDC Section 2154D for the criteria of approval. One, whether the proposed zoning change implements the policies of the adopted comp plan or any other applicable adopted plans. So, the comp plan has this whole area designated as complete neighborhood, and again, y'all are pretty familiar with this. It's a mix of residential neighborhood commercial. We should consider things like the roadway, conflicts among land uses, and the undue concentration or diffusion of population. The proposed zone change to R2 implements the policies of the adopted comp plan by providing a different lot size to add to the mix of residential that's existing along Lower Seguin. Two, whether the proposed zoning change promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. So, the proposed R2 accesses transition to the smaller residential lot developments and the large agricultural properties that are surrounding it. Three, whether the uses permitted by the proposed change will be consistent and appropriate with existing uses in the media area. So, there are existing residential developments surrounding the subject property. Just within half a mile, we have Rhine Valley, Carmel Ranch, Saddle Brook, and then we have the proposed Monterey Meadows subdivision. Kind of just giving you a breakdown of what's existing in the area. The Rhine Valley PDD contains about 80% of the lots that are 50 feet to 45 feet wide, and it's 447 residential lots. So, what's being proposed tonight would be larger than what's there in Rhine Valley. Saddle Brook Ranch, about 80% of the lots are 60 feet wide or less, and it's a total of 633 residential lots. Again, what's being proposed tonight would be larger than 80% of the lots in Saddle Brook Ranch. Carmel Ranch, 84% of those lots are 60 feet or 55 feet wide, 131 residential lots. So, what's being proposed tonight would be larger than 84% of the lots in Carmel Ranch. And then, to the east of the subject property, we have Monterey Meadows, that is straight zoning R2 and R6. So, it would match with the R2 that's existing there in Monterey Meadows, but would be larger than the R6 that they have. And then, just in the larger area, to give you more context, along Rear Road, we have the Kruger Martin Track that also has a split zoning of R2 and R6. It matches the R2 that they had approved and is larger than the R6 that they have. So, four, whether other factors are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not provide additional criteria for the proposed zone change, but SCUC ISD was notified, and fire EMS and police have been notified of the zone change requests, and no objections were provided. So, staff recommends approval of ordinance 25S22 due to the proposed change, the proposed zone change compatibility with the comprehensive land use plan, future land use map, and existing uses along Lower Seguin. And the Planning and Zoning Commission met on May 7th, held a public hearing, and made a recommendation of approval to city council with a unanimous vote. And then, the applicant is here if you have any specific questions for them.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to address the council?
Good evening. Paul Lande, MTR Engineers, here on behalf of the applicant. I don't necessarily have a presentation prepared, but I am available to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. The time is 6:43. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Going once. Going twice. All right, public hearing is closed, 6:43. Council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 25S022.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? None, please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have seven ayes, no objections, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to item number nine, ordinance number 25S023. Conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 62 acres of land from planned development district PDD and pre-development district to single-family residential district R2 located approximately 3,800 feet east of the intersection of FM 1518 and Trainer Hill Road, known as Bear County property identification numbers 310054 and a portion of 310053 and a portion of 310061, City of Shirts, Bear County, Texas. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours.
Good evening, once again. Ordinance 25S23, a proposed zone change to R2 along Trainer Hill Road, approximately 62 acres. Daisy Marquez, planner. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. It is kind of nestled in between Rear Road, Trainer Hill Road, and FM 1518. So, the subject property is currently zoned pre-development district and planned development district. So, it's part of that original Sterling Grove PDD, but it remains... So it's part of that original Sterling Grove PDD, but it remains undeveloped. To the north, the subject property is zoned pre-development district. It's undeveloped agricultural and has a residence on it. To the south, we have R1, Pre-Development and AD. And again, that's more agriculture, agricultural, rural residences and undeveloped. To the east, we have Pre-Development, AD, and R2. And then to the west, we have the rest of the Sterling Grove PDD and then Pre-Development District. So we sent out 13 notices on April 21st. We did receive three in favor and three in opposition. We posted a notice in the San Antonio Express. A sign was posted along Trainer Hill, Trainer Hill Road, and it went to P&amp;Z on May 7th for a public hearing. So again, the subject property is 62 acres and they are proposing R2 for a single-family residential development. So kind of just giving you a background on the Sterling Grove PDD and how we got here today. So the Sterling Grove PDD was approved with ordinance 22 S 28 in 2022, and it was originally 362 acres. And it was supposed to contain 832 single-family homes. And it was essentially almost three zoning districts built into that PDD. So 55 by 110 lots, 65 by 110 lots, and half-acre lots. So 81% of those lots were going to be 55-foot by 65-foot wide lots. But then we had ordinance 24 S 149 come in and it got approved, which is the proposed Poppy Hill subdivision. And that removed 79 acres as they were trying to develop at a faster pace than the Sterling Grove PDD. And that's now R1. That's along Trainer Hill Road, and it removed parts of Phase 1, 2, and 3 of the original Sterling Grove PDD. So tonight, they're proposing to remove 62 acres. And they're proposing R2 to resolve the access issues from the alteration of the Sterling Grove PDD. So now we're left with 221 acres of the original Sterling Grove PDD. And again, just showing you what the existing zoning is from the PDD. And essentially, the remainder of the half-acre lots that would have been part of the Sterling Grove PDD are now being proposed to be 70 by 120 lots and that R2 zoning district. So one, whether the proposed zoning change implements the policies of the adopted comp plan and any other applicable adopted plans. So again, this whole area is designated as complete neighborhood. It should be some sort of mix of residential and neighborhood, commercial. And the applicant is proposing larger lots than what is allowed in the Sterling Grove Park PDD. Two, whether the proposed zoning change promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. So again, the proposed R2 accesses transition from the smaller lots that are remaining in the 221 acres of the Sterling Grove PDD to the surrounding agricultural uses. Three, whether the uses permitted by the proposed change will be consistent and appropriate with existing uses in the media area. So R2 are minimum 8,400 square foot residential lots. And R2 is compatible and consistent with the surrounding area. As you can see in the larger area, again, the Sterling Grove PDD will remain with the smaller lots. We have R2 and that Kruger Martin Track and R6. And then we have R1 to the south with Poppy Hills. So four, whether other factors are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not provide additional criteria for the proposed zone change. SEUC ISD was notified and fire EMS and police have been notified and did not provide objections. So due to the compatibility of the proposed R2 with the media area and the complete neighborhood land use designation of the comp plan, staff recommends approval of ordinance 25 S 23. And the Planning and Zoning Commission met on May 7th, held a public hearing for the item and made a recommendation of approval to city council with a unanimous vote. And then the applicant is here and has a presentation.
Hi, good evening. Ashley Ferman with Killen Griffin in Ferman. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. And Daisy did a great job presenting, but just wanted to add a little bit more detail. So about three years ago, some of you were on council. We rezoned this for the Sterling Grove PDD. Things have changed since then, including at that time, the city was working out some issues regarding who would serve this site in terms of sewer service. And it was cost prohibitive to bring sewer service at the time to this property. So it is now served by the City of Shirts for sewer. And a lot of the discussion at that time was the lots that were remaining on this portion of the PDD would be septic. So by rezoning today, we're able to have those lots be served by sewer instead of septic. So there's, Daisy mentioned 62 acres left. We're asking for the R2, which we think is consistent with the surrounding zoning. And then this was the original PDD that was approved. It will be one developer that develops the remaining portion of the PDD. So the piece that we're not rezoning doesn't need to be rezoned. And then this 62 acres will all be one comprehensive neighborhood. And this is just proposal and the proposed land plan. It will go through preliminary plat, master plan, all those sorts of things. The area outlined in red would be the lots that we're rezoning for tonight for the R2. As Daisy also mentioned, when the 80 acres or so was taken out of that original PDD, it changed the road layout and access to this remaining 62 acres. And so by removing it, we also are fixing that problem and would have needed rezoning either way, but we think that R2 is the best option for those remaining lots. So again, it's that area outlined in red, and those would be the remaining larger lots of the Sterling Grove subdivision. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, the time is now 6:51. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Going once. Going twice. All right. Time is 6:52. Our public hearing is closed. Counsel, floor is open for discussion. There's no discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Excuse me. Turn the page. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 25 S 023?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, okay. Counselmember Watson.
So the rezoning is not going to include the sewer line, correct? Or is that still on the table for the other residents that are going to impact?
So the, with, now that the whole site is served by the City of Shirts for sewer, the whole Sterling Grove project would be served by Shirts Sewer and not septic.
But for the other residents, is that going to include?
Oh, the remaining portion?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. I'm sorry. Ryan.
So I think maybe, Councilwoman, at the time the initial zoning came forward, GVSUD had the CCN to provide sewer service in this area. And, and that was an issue. Subsequently, Shirts and GVSUD reached agreement for Shirts to provide. So the whole area here with the larger lot, we assume everything will be sewered and none of it will be on septic. Yeah. And that'll be done by Shirts.
Counsel, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 25 S 023? Some moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Hayward, second by Counselmember Brown. Counsel, any other questions? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have seven ayes, no objections, motion passes. We'll move on to item number 10, ordinance number 25 S 021. Conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 4.15 acres of land from General Business District GB to General Business District Dash 2, GB2, located approximately 900 feet east of the intersection of FM 1518 and Maskey Road, known as 46 Maskey Road and 44 Maskey Road Lots 3, 4, and Block 1 of Maskey Road, Road Business Park subdivision, and more specifically known as Guadalupe County. Property identification numbers 199116 and 199117. City assures Guadalupe County, Texas. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours.
Good evening, once again, ordinance 25 S 21. Proposed zone change to GB2 on Maskey Road, Daisy Marquez, planner. So here's the subject property outlined in yellow. It is to the east of the corner of Maskey Road and east FM 1518. So the subject property is currently zoned GB, and it is undeveloped. To the north is our Maskey Road, which is a commercial collector. And then to the south, we have properties zoned GB2 or General Business District. That is office, warehouse, and distribution. And then to the east, we have some more GB that is currently undeveloped. So we sent out 11 notices on April 25th, and we have only received one response in favor. We did publish a public hearing notice in the paper on May 14th, and a sign was placed along Maskey by the applicant. And then JBSA has been notified and affirmatively recommends approval of this request. And again, just showing you, the subject property is currently GB. They're proposing GB2. And why did we notify JBSA? Why did we need that affirmative recommendation? This subject property is located within the APZ2, so the accident potential zone 2. And per UDC, we need affirmative recommendation from JBSA before we can proceed with the zone change. So again, just showing you some aerials of the subject property and what it looks like now. It's undeveloped. It's by the soccer fields. The width and depth dimensions for the lots remain the same. The setbacks remain the same as well. The height restrictions are the same. And then previous coverage remains the same as well. It's just a change in allowed uses. So one, whether the proposed zone change implements the policies of the adopted comprehensive land plan or any other applicable adopted plans. So the comprehensive plan designates this area as industrial hub. So it should be some sort of manufacturing, processing, and distributing uses. And the intent of GB2 is for light industrial developments to serve the entire community. So this fits with the industrial hub land use designation. So two, whether the proposed zone change promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. So this is located within the APZ2, and JBSA did affirmatively recommend the zone change request. And as you can see here, a snippet of that letter from them. And they did recommend some FAR recommendations as part of that letter as well. And then three, whether the uses permitted by the proposed zone change will be consistent and appropriate with existing uses in the media area. So again, this whole area is surrounded by GB, GB2. As you already know, along that northern 1518, it's more light industrial. You see warehousing. Four, whether other factors are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. So all UDC requirements have been met for the proposed zone change. And Shirts, fire, EMS, and police have been notified of the zone change and did not provide any objections. So due to the character of the surrounding area, consistency with the comp plan and the affirmative recommendation from JBSA, staff recommends approval of 25 S 21. And the P&amp;Z met on May 7th and unanimously recommended approval of ordinance 25 S 21 to the city council.
Is the applicant here? No, okay. All right, the time is now 6:58. This is a, a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the city council? Going once. Going twice. Right, time is 6:58. Public hearing is closed, all right. Counsel, floor is open for discussion. Counselmember Westbrook.
Hey, thank you, mayor. So if you can go back a slide, the commercial and entertainment? Commercial amusement, I'm sorry, indoor. Examples of that, commercial and amusement. Only reason I ask is, so it's across from a soccer park, right? So you're bringing these kids, you're bringing families. It seems like this, the neighboring areas should all be consistent with trying to, they should all segue into one another and feed off of one another. I don't know if light industrial is sort of complementary to having a fire, you know what I'm saying? To having a soccer park right across the street from it versus indoor amusement? I agree with that one. So when you say indoor amusement, what do we, can you give me an example? Maybe.
Oh, so are you asking the applicant is proposing?
No, no, just, just give me an example. He's, he's welcome to do whatever in GB2, right? So just, I'm hoping he has the same thought as I do. But for amusement, for amusement indoor, what are we talking about? What, can we?
So amusement indoor typically is some sort of like, you see things like private baseball training, where they kind of do it inside of a warehouse, away from the elements, things like that, like gym training.
Yep. You're, are you at liberty to say what the individual's plans are for this GB2?
Oh, the, per the letter of intent, they're proposing some sort of like warehouse development.
All right, thank you.
Counselmember Brown.
Yeah, what were the additional comments from JBSA?
They just wanted to see if, essentially, what were they proposing? So they could give the recommended FAR. So it's 2 for warehousing and then .28 for retail, if they wanted to do retail in that area.
Okay, because, yeah, again, you know, they're, they're approving it because they don't say anything specific. But, you know, what else, what are they concerned about is what?
Right, and so to be, to be clear, maybe, trying to avoid Daisy, right? So.
I know how it works, so.
Yeah, you, you know how it works. I mean, again, actually, the GB2 uses, the industrial warehouse distribution tend to have a lower occupancy per square foot. So it's in fact more compatible with the JBSA's mission. Again, those, those additional industrial type uses are really more consistent with what you would want.
As long as we don't have any 250-foot towers and.
Yeah, you've still got the height limit issues associated either way. But, but yet, uses, and again, I think it's Daisy's that typically wants to warehouse distribution type stuff. It's typically more compatible.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other comments? Counselmember Watson.
Motion that we approve ordinance 25 S is 021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Counselmember Watson, second by Counselmember Davis. Counsel, any other comments? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to a workshop discussion. Calling for an election to annex property within five miles of Joint Base San Antonio Randolph. Mr. James.
Thank you, mayor. So there was a request by Counselmember Davis to have a workshop discussion on a provision in state law that we talked about last year. In fact, September 17th, 2024, we came to city council to talk about this item. Didn't necessarily get direct feedback, and so I think the idea was to sort of come back with it. So just as a reminder, there's a provision in the local government code, Section 430117, that allows essentially, if you're, for areas within a certain distance of certain military bases, that essentially, that five-mile area, cities can call for an election to allow the folks in the ETJ within that five-mile distance to either elect to be annexed or to have the city be granted certain zoning authority consistent with the most recent joint land use study for that, for that base. And so obviously, that's what we have here. And so it applies to Randolph, applies to the area in Shirts. Again, the provision, as I said, allows that a municipality may annex full or limited purposes under the annexation provision applicable to this chapter for areas within five miles of the boundary of a military base in which active training program is conducted. Annexation proposition shall be stated to allow the voter, voters of the area to be annexed or to choose between either annexation or providing the municipality with the authority to adopt and enforce an ordinance regulating use within the area in a manner consistent. So you can see the provisions there. This is the map showing the areas within five miles of JBSA. Again, the areas we have that are in the ETJ are really down south. And you may recall that we did a series of annexations. We have a number of development agreements that would be limited. But there are a fair number of properties that we could in fact annex. So there are a few where we've got the annexation agreements. Those allow us to annex upon development or a certain time period. Most of those are fairly small. Again, we've got the Rump Track, the Womanhawering Creek Track. But then we've got a number of others that we did with the annexations. But essentially, that's what it would allow us to do. So I can answer any more questions that we've had since that. So I can answer any more questions that we've had since that last work session. But essentially, what it would let us do is hold that election, allow the property owners to vote to see which way that they want to go. And so really, what we're doing is seeking direction from council if you want us to proceed with this election. I think the concern expressed is that without any of these regulations, right now, people could do whatever they want. There's no ability for the city to regulate that. So the things we just talked about on the last item, we don't have any of those controls in the area. And, and so this would certainly give those folks the choice to decide which they, which way they want to go with it. So I'll quit talking now, answer any questions. But really, what staff is seeking, based on Councilman Davis's request, is if you want us to, when we bring forward the ordinance calling for the election, to include this on that.
All right. Counsel floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Could you quickly go back to those ones that are, you had the restrict, the ones that were affected and not affected? Yeah, these properties would not be part of any action?
So the ones with the yellow are, are the ones that we have the delayed annexation agreement. They would not be affected, right? So you may remember the pinch horns.
Yeah, but all I'm trying to do is get an idea of how much is.
Yeah, it's, they're very, they're very few. The largest is the, is the portion of the Woman Hollering Creek Track right here that subsequently we did the annexation agreement on. So this is probably the biggest piece we have. The next biggest is the Rump Track right here, and they again have the restriction as to what the development can be. They're, they're working through the development process going forward. And then beyond that, we just have a couple other parcels. This one has a delayed annexation agreement that expires in 2026. It's a little bit of an unusual one, but the other parcels would all come in, other than again, the, the, the couple of homesteads, really.
All right. So all those owners would get to vote?
All those, all the owners who are not covered under a delayed annexation agreement. Let me see if I've got a cleaner map.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a cleaner map. I apologize. It's on a series of them. So if you're under the delayed annexation agreement, I've already covered you under the delayed annexation agreement. It's really everybody else that would be covered. And again, so this, this tract up, up here, the remainder of this parcel down here, the parcel here, the parcel here, and then this area up in here. And then I think we've got a little bit right up at 78 and 1518.
A few hundred, a few hundred owners.
A few hundred, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, again, this is the most populated area right in here, right? But there, there are a few fairly sizable areas throughout.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I, I requested this because after going through our last round of cleaning up the annexation agreements, you know, it, to me, it looks like we have all these pockets of no man's land in South Shirts that potentially can give us administrative headaches going forward. They're, they are not, they're in our ETJ, they are not annexed by the city. We do provide some level of service, whether that be by, by fire department or mutual aid agreement or something else like that. But we also run into the problem as, as the city grows and develops. And, and, you know, I, I fall back on this from before I go on council. I remember coming here, and there was a resident from South Shirts that talked about, this will never develop. This has been in my family for generations, and it will never develop, and it will stay this way forever. And then I got elected to city council, and he was in there like two years later saying, why is the city holding me back from developing my property? I want to develop it, but because of the way it's zoned, and you won't change anything, I can't develop it. We, we, we do need some administrative clarity for the rest of this area of South Shirts. And unfortunately, with the state legislature, it doesn't give us a real clear path, but I think this is better than nothing because ultimately it comes down to these folks that are in that gray area, and it gives them a choice. Either agree to annexation or at least allow the city to have the zoning authority. And although it's in accordance with the JLU, it does give us some more clarity and more flexibility and prevents us from having someone out of the blue all of a sudden now just coming to council or just coming, you know, notifying the city, oh, by the way, we're going through Bear County, and we're going to go ahead and develop this thing that is 100% incompatible with anything in the southern part of the city. So to me, I, I think it's a no-brainer to call for the election and, and see if we can just administratively clear this up.
Mayor Paul Temma Hayward.
I just have a quick question, and that's, do we have any idea where the residents in this area are leaning? Like, have we had some discussion with them? Or we're just calling the election out of the?
Yeah, we're just calling the election out of the blue. Now, again, we've talked about it. My assumption is that if a resident goes and votes, they're going to vote for what they perceive to be the lesser of two evils, right? Or the, the least regulation. So my assumption is they're going to vote, I'd rather grant you that land use control than annexing it. But again, I think per Councilman Davis, that's really what we want, is just to make sure they don't do anything incompatible with JBSA. It's not so much about, oh, we, we definitely want to annex you. And, and so I think we would be fine with that. I, I would agree. We're going to field a lot of calls. It's, it's a different kind of provision and whatnot. But again, what this does do is give us some control over this area that, that, that has the ability to develop in a way that's incompatible with JBSA in Randolph.
One other real quick question. This is for the entire group of, of parcels. It isn't each parcel individually.
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Gado.
How many residents are we talking about here?
I, I don't know. As Councilman Brown asked, rarely where we've got, you know, the concentration of residents are off Woman Hollering Road, and then it's this area up in here. So we have a fair number. I'd hate to hazard a guess, but this is, is fairly heavily populated, whereas some of the other parcels, you know, down in this area, maybe there are just a few homes. But, but really, it's this area, you can see the number of houses, and then you got a bunch of houses up and through here.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? I have one. On the election, it's going to have one or the other on that box, either rezon or annex, right? Is that what it's going to read?
Essentially, the state has particular language that we would work through. Yeah, essentially, it, you pick one or the other. Because I understand it, yeah.
So it could be a tie.
You know, theoretically, it could be a tie. It's quite possible. And there's probably, it probably, the way it's worded, probably that probably goes one way or the other, I would assume.
Okay. We'll get a choice?
I would assume the state, our state legislatures have thought of that and written accordingly.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. Councilmember Davis, you had?
Yeah. The only other question I have is if, if there are choices either to allow an ordinance giving the city authority to control zoning in accordance with the JLU or annexation, is the annexation part an immediate annexation? Or could it be worded that they would have a locked-in delayed annexation?
So, so I would, it doesn't say anything in Dancon time. It doesn't say anything about you delay, do a development agreement, anything like that. I think from staff's position, we're going to go the point of doing this election, and the majority of folks say, yep, go ahead and annex us. In light of where the legislature's going, staff would say, we're going to proceed directly to annexation, do it getting done. Otherwise, in two years, something may change, and it defeats the whole thing.
Thank you. Mayor Paul Temma Hayward.
Since you need direction for us, go for it. It's my take. I don't know about anybody else's.
Yes, I think we have a consensus.
So what you would get is, again, in July, State Secretary's Office brings forward the ordinance calling for the election. This will give time for them to prepare that, and so you can see what it looks like and have that ready as part of that.
Okay. I think we got direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we have a workshop on unpaved surfaces.
Good evening, counsel. Daisy Marquez Planner, and I'm here to present on impervious coverage, also known as unpaved surfaces. So we had a representative from Neighborhood Services come back in September 2023, as some of you remember, and they spoke about unimproved parking surfaces. They showed you what our current standards were, what the open violations were, and what some of the closed cases were for that. So now we're back to discuss that once again. So our current standards for unpaved surfaces or for paving, we look to UDC section 21102. We require all driveways and required off-street parking spaces to be paved concrete or asphalt surfaces, and this includes all drive, drive approaches. And then when it comes to outdoor display and outdoor storage, we require that all areas intended for outdoor display be paved. So what does this look like when it comes to new development? So new developments are required to go through the City of Shirts development process. This can include plating, site plan. And when they go through this process, the UDC requires that all parking, drive aisles, and stor- storage areas be paved concrete or asphalt surfaces. And as you can see from these images of developments within Shirts, it's pretty clear where the entrances and exits are for these developments. Essentially, they meet all the landscaping requirements. It kind of sets a tone for the development and for the area, what people can expect of Shirts. But most importantly, a lot of these businesses make the financial commitment to meet the community aesthetic and the UDC standards. So what happens and what is happening now with illegal expansions? So these are two examples of active violations within the City of Shirts where illegal expansions have happened, and people are utilizing gravel or base material for parking and storage areas, and they do not have permits and are in current violation of this UDC. And as you can see, they just have storage of materials out in the open. We don't really know what's going on. It kind of looks like a construction site. And then we have the picture at the bottom that shows people parking on grass areas and gravel. So here are some more examples of development that has happened and illegal expansions without permits. And again, these are all within the City of Shirts, and there are active code violations. So I'm here to present a policy question for city council. Do we continue to require paved concrete or asphalt parking and storage areas? Or which direction do you want to go? So some things to consider, the aesthetic standard of the city. The current standard requires businesses to be paved concrete or asphalt, as seen in one of our businesses on FM 309 here to the left. And if the city council changes this UDC requirement and allows unpaved parking services, then it could look like the image on the right that is an active code case. Businesses can then be parking on unpaved surfaces such as grass, gravel, dirt, or mud, depending on the decision of city council. So what does city council want the aesthetic of Shirts to be? A premier community that requires pavement or a community that allows people to have storage and be parking on grass and gravel. Something else to consider is dust, dirt, debris. Parking and storage on unpaved surfaces can lead to dust leaving the businesses and polluting the air quality. We can't really control this loose material going onto adjacent properties. And if our air quality as a city degrades enough, TCEQ will actually investigate the city and order changes to improve the air quality, and the city will have to be fiscally responsible for implementing those changes so we can come into compliance. Also, this loose material of dirt, gravel, and mud can enter city streets, and it can damage our City of Shirts infrastructure. So again, it could enter our storm drains, but also it can go onto sidewalks and roadways, which would require additional cleaning efforts from the city. So again, we would have to implement more street sweeping, hire more manpower for that. But also, unpaved parking and storage areas can impact emergency services if the property owner does not complete routine maintenance. So again, dirt, gravel, and mud, it's not really a material like concrete and pavement. So over time, with people traveling on these roads, whether it's 18-wheelers or whether it's regular motor vehicles, and with rain, we're going to get a lot of potholes, we're going to get a lot of depressions. And usually, people don't maintain these until it gets to a really bad situation. So then they just dump more gravel on top of it to remedy it. And this can impact EMS and response times. So a city council concerned with the dirt, dust, and debris affecting adjacent properties, infrastructure, roads, and emergency services. Something else to consider is storm water quality concerns. So again, this debris leaves sites and onto city streets and adjoining areas, which affects other property owners and the city. So again, the city will have to be more aggressive with street sweeping. But more importantly, the city pulls a federal permit, and this is called our municipal separate storm sewer system permit, which is our MS4 permit for short. And essentially, we have to make sure as a city and everyone else that is doing work around us to monitor our best management practices or our BNP's to make sure our storm water runoff and our straight water quality is maintained at a certain level. And if we allow everyone to have some sort of unpaved surface and our water quality and our water runoff quality degrades to a certain level, the city could be in violation of their MS4 permit, and the city would have to act on this, and it would cause a financial impact based, based on private business owners having unpaved parking and storage areas, but we would be the ones fiscally responsible for remedying that. So a city council concerned with storm water quality. When we look at amendments, we also look at our target cities and neighboring areas. So again, these are people with similar populations, similar growth rates, and just people that are next to us in general. Everybody pretty much requires paved parking areas, and when it comes to storage, it's unclear for Seguin, Selma doesn't really, but everyone else is a yes. And then something to consider if the requirement changes. How do the businesses that made this financial investment to go through the development process to pave and put asphalt on their drivable surfaces and on their storage areas react when adjacent property owners can use gravel and other material? Would this degrade their investment that they made into our city? Would this degrade the character of the area that, you know, they put millions of dollars in? Will the dirt, dust, and debris from the adjacent unpaved parking deteriorate their paved parking and investment? And does it lower the character of that area that they chose to develop in? But most importantly, how does the overall character and aesthetic of Shirts change when we start allowing people to use unpaved surfaces? And does the air quality and storm water quality of Shirts degrade? So our UDC as it stands does not allow for unimproved surfaces for drivable areas or for storage areas. Staff is seeking direction on how city council would like to proceed with the enforcement of unimproved surfaces, and if there is a desire to change the current UDC regulations for parking and storage areas.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Okay. Counsel, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
You don't leave us a whole lot of room for discussion on those questions.
Staff has an opinion on this one.
You might, you might think so. Yeah. But the only thing I could, I could say is that, I'm not talking about those random ones where there's a vehicle parked here and a vehicle parked there, but somebody, for example, Roadrunner that's been in business for a long time, some type of a transition for them. I'm not saying grandfather them. I'm just saying some type of a transition for them. And, you know, then it's up to them and their business plans.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. Again, like a lot of things we do, it's not as though we were looking for direction, go out tomorrow and, and throw the book at them. But I think since we talked about this a while back, we got busy with other things, ordinance changes, annexation, wanted to come back again. And, and I think the way staff would typically approach this is get clear direction. If the direction is, yeah, we need to get people to comply with the ordinance, we can't have folks just when it's convenient for them or inconvenient for them start to violate the code. Come up with a game plan, work with folks, but let them know you're going to have to come into compliance. But we'll work with you. It's not going to happen overnight. It's, it, you know, I'd say it's a six to 12-month period we're going to be working with folks on. But I think the problem staff has on this, and Daisy alluded to it, is this is one that what you find is a business comes in, and then they start to grow, things start to change for them, and, and then they creep. And we don't notice it first, but then you look up and go, where did, where did that come from? And, and then it becomes a bigger problem. And so again, part of it is the code allows for even today, is this provision for some temporary things to let them kind of come into compliance. So again, we have a mechanism in the code to deal with businesses that run into a problem to, to not have them too constrained, but they got to have a plan to get it corrected and move forward. And so I think that's really. And so, I think that's really what staff's position is on this one. You know, because otherwise, we look up and we have businesses saying, well, I ran out of space. Well, you ran out of space three years ago. How many more years till you bring it into compliance? And at that point, somebody else buys a business because they were doing it, they've been doing this for five years. Why can't I keep doing it? Is the challenge we face on this one.
Councilmember, Councilmember McAluso?
Yeah, just, you know, my opinion is that we do need to enforce, and that giving a business a reasonable amount of time and what that answer is, I think, is something that probably will take a little bit of a discussion because, you know, it could be a significant cost to them. But overall, it does affect the character and the appearance of the city, and I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think from staff, you know, you drive down Shirts Parkway, the other side of 35, right? You've got Amazon that's made that big investment, and then you've got Selma with the regulation they have, and you can see the one side of the road is dusty or dirty when it rains. It becomes an issue for us. Yep. So, if that's generally the consensus, then, is we need to stick with what we've got. Again, as we hear feedback, we can possibly look at making some tweaks. But what we'll do is develop a game plan. We can keep council informed how we're doing, and we'll certainly work with folks. It's not going to happen overnight, but, but where you'll get calls is we're going to come to somebody and say, you have to start down this effort, right? And if you basically just say, I'm not going to start down this effort, I'm not going to do anything, then we'll just start enforcing. But otherwise, we'll work with folks to help them through that development process, make sure we handhold them through, right? But then, give them the time they need and kind of focus that way going forward. So, if that's consensus, we'll be out there, we'll keep you guys up to date.
Councilmember Geraldo?
I also agree, we definitely need to have them enforced, because the minute one, one gets out of line, then we have another one, and then another one, and then it just gets out of control. So, I agree.
Councilmember Westbrook?
Yes, Mayor, Brian. So, you did box us in with the questions. I agree with Councilman Brown on that one. It's not much choice. Do we care about air quality? Yeah, it's a tough one. We're not going to say no. I will push back on one other one, which was in terms of the, what was it, MS4?
Yep.
In the MS4? So, water runoff from an asphalt parking lot versus water runoff from a, from a field that may not be used, you know, that's...
Yeah.
Water runoff from an asphalt parking lot is pretty gravel.
So, yeah, you can certainly get, again, let me be clear, where you have paved surfaces, concrete or asphalt, and you have vehicles parking on that, right? You get the little bits of rubber from tread, you know, you get oil that drips out of cars, any freeze, things like that. That's an issue we have now that we have to deal with. You get that same stuff generally at times, maybe to a lesser degree when you have that unpaved surface, but what you do get is you get that dirt and the rock going into the system. So, you get a problem both ways. Again, we have to deal with both. It's, one is a more common problem, the paved surfaces and the things from vehicles, but when you get these areas that are gravel or caliche that people are doing these activity on, that all washes down along with the stuff that seeped into that top layer.
Yes, sir. So, when it comes to, I thought you'd answered all my questions, I thought that was one of the things, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, the, so, oh, so, there's no possibility of a grandfathering or non-conforming use?
So, so, let me be clear. So, we, we will have uses out there that are grandfathered, who prior to us having a code, prior to them being annexed, were doing that and can continue to do that the way they were doing. But the vast majority of the cases we are dealing with, right, are folks that they started one way, and you can go back to Google Earth and see what they were doing, and then with the code in place as it is, they just started to go, oh, they're parking there, and then a year later, they're parking more. So, yeah, some folks are going to be grandfathered. They can keep doing what they're doing, that's certainly fine and ours a position. But the problem we are running into is the vast majority of folks, they go and they start a business, which is great, business does well, that's great, but then they outgrow their space, and they don't want to reinvest in the business at that point, they want to just continue to expand in a way that's not compliant. So, anybody who's grandfathered or vested, they, they can keep doing what they're doing. What we could do, and I want to be real clear, you could say, I want to let everybody as of, you know, July 1st of 2025, whatever they're doing, we're going to grandfather them. The problem you're going to have with that is you're going to get folks walking in on July 2nd going, wait a minute, why was he allowed to do it? I want to do it. That doesn't seem fair. And then, again, it's going to be what it's going to be, but then we're going to look up, say, in January of 2026, and drive by, and now some guy who wasn't grandfathered that July 1st, he has started doing it. And then, we're back to the same thing, and he's going to make the same argument, well, why don't you just move the grandfather date and let everybody who was doing it as of February 1st, 2026 be grandfathered? And you're going to be in this never-ending cycle. And so, I think that's the problem is, if, if you're going to grandfather the folks who've done this thing they shouldn't have done, frankly, from a staff perspective, just let everybody do it going forward. And I mean that sincerely. I don't think that's what we want to do. I think we're being fairly generous that we're going to give you time, we're going to work with you, but just because you did something you weren't supposed to, doesn't mean we're going to reward you, right? It's like, oh, we all did as kids, you know, hey, you weren't supposed to do that. My mom or dad wasn't going to let me benefit that, I was giving back, taking back whatever, you know, grounded for a month, kind of a thing.
Got you.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Hayward?
I'm going to say we probably, we need to enforce it. As much as I know we'll get pushback and we'll get phone calls, but to me, in the minute you have a business and then it grows, and so now you're parking on the grass, and you're parking, and like the storage place with the Conex boxes, I live out there. They've just like, when I first got here, you could barely tell they were there. Now, it's like right there in your face, and so, it's out of control. And so, they don't want to put anything into the business, they just want to keep doing what they're doing and expanding. And I think at some point, if we don't get a handle on it, we lose control. And if we are wanting to be a premier city, we need to say, as much as we appreciate you being here, this is the enforcement. If it causes you grief, we're giving you time to fix it, but if it's causing you grief, we understand, you may have to relocate somewhere else. Not, I mean, because if we don't, we won't ever get where we need to be.
Yeah, and I think this is when we say this, and y'all have been on council, you get this, when we go out and do this, you will hear from the folks that are in violation, who are frustrated we're enforcing, and it'll feel like that's the only people you're hearing from, right? The flip side is if you don't do this, or you go a different way, well, it won't be as immediate. Two or three years from now, you'll start getting calls from all these residents going, what's happened to Shirts? What is this stuff, right? It's, it's one of those that becomes difficult, because, yeah, you're going to hear from the folks we're enforcing on, all the folks who like the standard we have set, they don't call you and tell you, great job, but if you went the other way, over time, you would all start hearing from them, I think.
I mean, and I recall, this started when Dr. Scagliola was on council, and we were having this issue, and then we were going to do a committee and looking to see if there's other materials that could be used that would satisfy it, but I don't think there's any other materials out there that would satisfy it. And so, it's been a while since he's been on council, so I think it's time for us to go ahead and deal with it, and we'll have to take the brunt of the, the phone calls and have to deal with that, because we're the ones that's saying, go forth and enforce. So, we'll just have to deal with that and let the chips fall where they may.
And certainly, staff will try to deal with those before they get to you.
Mr. Williams, do you have a comment?
Yes, so, if, if I'm hearing correctly, the consensus of the council, we do have an ordinance in place, it's been in place for some time. We will work within that ordinance, and if it's appropriate, I'll just go ahead and throw it out there that we will require compliance within 12 months.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll make note, we have cases. In fact, I, just as a side note, I've seen it proliferate, and I, I've been here two and a half years. I drive around all the time, pretty much every day, and look at the city. I've seen it proliferate in the time that I've been here, especially along 1518 South, as well as some of the other businesses that were mentioned specifically. It, once 1518 is finished and some other roads are finished, it's really going to stand out when you see the development come online down there, and we start requiring those new businesses to comply. So, a year, if that's okay with, if there's no objection from the council, we'll move forward under the current ordinance, and we'll require that compliance within a year.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, it's a no-brainer. We, we have the ordinance, and it's just, like you said, folks that are just either cognizant of the ordinance and don't care, or they're not, and they've just expanded and didn't realize that. But I mean, the ordinance is the ordinance, and, and that's, to me, it's, it's the standard we want. My question is, can you go over the process of what we're going to do with enforcement now? So, let's say, for instance, we have a, a business that is parking on unpaved surfaces, and we go out there and we give them a notice of violation, and we're going to work with them, give them 12 months. What are the city's actions? What are you going to do over the 12 months? What are you going to do when we hit the 12-month mark? What, you know, how do we, how do we end up fixing this?
Right. So, I think, I think what we'll do is we'll prepare materials, a packet of information. We, we want to know who a lot of these folks are, so we'll tailor it specifically to their situation, right? And we'll go out, tell them that they're in violation, show them what the code is, and then lay out for them, here are the steps for you to come into compliance, here are the options that you, you have. And for folks who own the property, and it's part of their site, we'll walk them, here's the site plan you have to go through to expand your area, and here's what you have to do in terms of submitting a site plan and pulling permits to do that, and all those things to go with it. So, we will try to handhold the folks through this to show them exactly, particular to their situation, what needs to happen going forward, and assist them in making that progress, because we have the clock ticking. Now, some folks, you know, I know we have one that's parking on an area that they don't own, and one of the issues they've said is, well, I don't own that, so I'm not going to make the investment in it. And the answer is, well, I don't know what to tell you. You're going to have to make the investment in it, buy it, or you're going to have to find an off-site, say, place to store these vehicles, right? And so, we'll tailor it specific to the property owner and time it. I, I think where we typically want to work with folks is those folks who are making a good faith effort. So, we go out and we talk to them, give them the packet of information, they call a week later, ask a few questions about it, come back. They call and go, who are the folks that kind of do this stuff? And we can't recommend, but we'll say, here are the firms that come in with this stuff for people, and they start contacting. We get one of those folks calling a month later saying, hey, I got called by this person, can you tell me what they need to do? We'll walk them through the deal, handhold through that process, to ensure that they are making progress toward, toward getting there and getting compliance. And that's, again, I think what council expects is, if the guy's making good progress and showing good faith, work with them to be able to do that with that timeframe. And so, that's what we'll do.
My concern is, okay, I'm all for the city being a good partner and working through this, and I'm okay with 12 months. I'm okay with even if there's, if there's a plan, I mean, you know, we went through COVID where you couldn't get materials, I get all that, but, okay, so if we have someone, though, that is just saying, I'm not going to do it, then what is the city's recourse?
So, the city will then work with the city prosecutor, as we often do on these things, and take the appropriate course of action, right? And that tends to be where we do, right? You've heard this thing with bandit signs and things like that, for the folks that says, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Okay, great, get in compliance. The guy who says, nope, I'm not doing anything, here's your notice of violation, here's your violation, come in and see you in court, and so, we'll work it that way.
Can we, if, if we have any, my only request going forward is if we have anybody that is unable to comply after anything that we do over a 12-month period, and we end up going through the court system, can we get some feedback on that, on how that's working?
We certainly can. And again, one thing to keep in mind, and I'll just sort of say this, is the court process doesn't move quickly, right? And that's sort of by design. And at times, we have limited ability to, to, to sort of get it often, I would say this, in my experience over the course of my career, the, the folks who do not want to comply with the city's ordinance, you kind of have to go at them, and go at them, and go at them, and kind of get, you've just got to keep at it with it. And so, we'll work with the prosecutor on that to avail ourselves, and so, we'll see what we get. But it is not going to be a quick process, even in those cases. It just takes time. It's, you know, an example is the Freeway Manor case. It's, it's slow, but we've been chipping away at it, and we've been making progress. Thank you.
Mayor Tim Hayward?
Kind of along the lines with Councilmember Davis. So, you keep going at them. How long do you go at them to decide, is there any process beyond that if they're not complying once the courts?
Sure. It becomes a judgment call that we have to do, and we have to work with the prosecutor and work with the city attorney, right? Because often with these things that people are in violation of, they can go, fine, here, I'm just going to pay. I'll walk in and I'll pay a fee, and I'll keep doing what I'm doing. We got to go at them, go. So, we have to then look at other avenues we have as opposed to the standard, right? Most folks, you get their attention on the first one, they come into compliance, but as Rebecca knows, not everybody does, right? And we got to keep, keep going at them and look at how we deal with that and what we do, and, and deal with that going forward. Yeah. But I will say, the prosecutor's been extremely helpful, I think, that we have with Denny Navarro's done a really good job, and has really been helpful to staff, so I think we're happy to have him as we move through this.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Maybe throw one more thing out there, Brian. What about the possibility of requiring, if, if 12 months is too long to wait, and then we've got to go through the process, what about requiring after six months that they have some sort of plan submitted, or, or some sort of movement towards the goal, rather than waiting the full 12, and then they don't comply?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, we'll work with the city attorney and the prosecutor to make sure we're being consistent and fair with everybody, but certainly, we understand that concept. Just don't want to make sure we don't create problems for ourselves, but I don't know if you want to chime in on some of that, having to go back and back at people?
Yeah, absolutely. So, compliance is always the goal. Sometimes enforcement does take time. And repetitive consistency reminders, first off, we like to start with education. Some people don't know, but some people do. And that's how we determine which route we're going to go. So, yes, compliance is always the goal, and chipping away at it little by little, we'll get there.
I think we do have a consensus that we're going to enforce the ordinance, we're going to provide 12 months. My question is notification. We have to get signed notification from each one that they've been notified. Otherwise, we're, we're back to square one 10 months later, when we don't have anything that they received.
Sure. We can send things by certified mail, we can drop it off. Again, we can make sure that anybody who is just doing their business would have been notified about it. Again, for the guy who's going to, I'm going to avoid him ducking around the corner when you come, you know, to some degree, they know what we're doing, they're, they're just ducking us. But we'll follow the legal steps we have to, to make sure we've provided adequate notice to people. But generally, it's going out knocking and chatting and...
It is, and we document our cases, any contact that we have, whether it be through mail, email, some people stop in the lobby, we have face-to-face conversations, sometimes we're able to catch the owner or the agent on property, and we can provide information there. We'll come back and we'll document those cases, so every case that we have will be documented all the way, which builds a stronger case for us when we do, if we have to go to court.
I have a question for Mr. Novak back there. He's just sitting down.
You have a joke?
What's, what's the price per square foot for asphalt? Or how is that the price? Just so I can know what...
Asphalt is typically paid for by the ton. The going price right now is about $120 per ton of asphalt. And so, if you assume about 147 pounds per cubic foot, depending on how thick you put down in the area, you can kind of calculate how much it costs on that.
All right. Thank you.
Usually, you put a little bit of base underneath it, and that's usually paid out either by the ton or cubic yard. Most often, cubic yard for how much you put in and compact it.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council? Oh, thank you. Yeah. He was back there, so I wasn't going to let him just sit back there and smile. All right. Item number 13, we have a closed session, the City Council. We will meet in closed session in accordance with Texas Governmental Code 551.072 to deliberate on the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The time is now, 7:44. We will reconvene after our closed session. We will reconvene after our closed session.
All right. We will, we'll get together on that one.
Okay. Did you want that on the future agenda? Is that what the request is?
I'm just, it doesn't have to be on, I mean, we need to discuss it, I guess, to see if that's something we can do and then put it in as a presentation.
All right. We will circle back with you on that one then. Council, any other items? Okay. All right. Announcements by councilmembers. Mayor Pro Tem Hayward?
Yes, I was able to attend the Sigma Gamma Rose Swim Day 1922 Water Safety Clinic Program and read a proclamation. It also gave me a chance to reconnect with the sorority because I am a soror, I just have been inactive. It was a great conversation getting started. I did the NLC Presidential and Executive Fly-In and got to do a White House briefing. And I'm planning on sending out the information that I got in the briefing to everyone as a TML president, so you should get that in an email as soon as I finish summarizing. I did the Police Department Retirement for Sergeant Salito and Officer Schmidt, did the ribbon cutting for HOM Designs, and then the police promotion for Sergeant Coons and Sergeant Flowers, and that's all.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Watson?
Attended the police retirement ceremony and that was all.
Okay. Councilmember McElusso?
I guess got to attend the shirts EMS banquet and the memorial that we had on Memorial Day.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I attended the EMS and also the retirement ceremony for the police department.
Councilmember Westbrook? Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Just the Memorial Day event, thank you.
The time is 8:04. We stand adjourned.